Pursuant to Chapter Twenty of the Acts of Two Thousand and Twenty Two, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person, in the city council chambers, and remotely. The Zoom link for this Zoom meeting was available through the city clerk's office. Anybody that requested will have it. This meeting also be transmitted live through the Lawrence City Council Facebook page, as well as the Lawrence City Council YouTube page. Madam Clerk, Rockwell.
Counselor Levy.
Present.
Counselor Plant.
Present.
Counselor Luzon is noted as absent. Counselor Del Rosario.
Present.
Counselor Santiago.
Present.
Counselor Marmel.
Present.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
The council vice president is noted as absent. Council President?
Present. Counselor Vice President Infante sent me a notification that she has had something that she needs to take care of her job, so she wasn't able to join today. Please join me for a moment of silence. Now, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us begin the flag of United States of America and the Republic we stand, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty, two thousand and twenty-five? Motion to approve?
Second.
There is a motion to approve, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now, we're going to proceed with public participations. The rules for public participation are as follow. You're going to have two and a half minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, you're going to hear a beep or a sound indicating that you still have thirty seconds to go. Please provide us with your name, your address, and do not refer to this council as an individual members. Refer to the council as a whole. Also, last year, it was brought out to my attention that a political candidate announced his campaign through our mic. That's not allowed. So, with that, we're going to proceed with the first name that is on the list, H. Malley. Name and address for the record, please.
H. Malley, fifty-three Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. We have an important emergency in our city. Our Lawrence Public School Cafeteria demand the best compensation. We, the Laurentian, are proud to have the best police department with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Maurice Agaral, doing excellent job to protect our citizens. Lawrence Police, one of the best police department in the nation. Lawrence Police Union, thank you for making Lawrence a safe city. As a citizen of forty years in this city, witness the best DPW leadership and employees. Thank you for making Lawrence a beautiful city. Lawrence Inspection Department employees, thank you for excellent job. We support your union. We must hire more inspector. Lawrence Public School, with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Ralph Guerrero, moving forward. We are proud to support Lawrence Teachers Union. Lawrence Public School Cafeteria workers, we stand united to support you. Lawrence always is strong. Lawrence always unite. We, the Laurentian, proud to support our veteran. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your bravery and sacrifices. We must hire two vacant position for Veteran Veterans Department. We must create the best elder commission for our city. Lawrence, one city under God. We pray for the safety of all police officers and the first responder. Lawrence Police Officer, thank you for excellent job. Lawrence Police Union, the union of pride and honor, we support you. We, the citizen, are united to demand the best compensation for Lawrence Public School Cafeteria workers.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Rich Russell, Counselor Russell. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Counselors. Rich Russell, thirty-four Cross Street. Consider me the hundred-and-seventy-pound elephant in the room, as I don't forget too much. The reason I'm doing this is because of what I saw on the Great City of Lawrence TV in the lobby yesterday morning. The city was touting itself at what a great job they've done replacing sidewalks in the city. This jarred my memory about two pieces of sidewalks in front of four Beresford Street and fourteen Ferguson Street. I took pictures of these sidewalks in October of twenty-three while I was city councilor and gave the pictures to the PPW director. I was told they would be put on the list. Nothing was done. I took the same photos August of twenty-four. Again, nothing was done. Today, I took this, retook the same photos, showing that no work had been done in twenty months. Now, I will play show and tell. There's Beresford Street. The guy can't even snowblow a snowblower's driveway or sidewalk because of the lumps in the street. Same thing, Ferguson Street. Person can't, they can't, they're afraid to use a snowblower for fact that they're going to pick up chunks of sidewalk, small concrete, and start hitting cars. Why is a lot of items that I brought up as a counselor that involved money get a, we'll look into it, get lost in the paperwork shuffle? Here are the pictures, I just showed them to you, that I requested to be repaired or replaced. I guess that that money was spent on Bengay for certain city officials to pat them from, straining their shoulder from patting themselves on the back. While I'm at it, where did the money for the FY twenty-five budget go that was promised to fix the three monument plaques? That was promised back in April of twenty-four. Rule number one about monuments, the honoree's name is supposed to be bigger than the biggest politician in the local political environment. Please, have the candidates follow the Lawrence Revised Zoning Ordinance Regarding Campaign Signs to wit, Section twenty-nine, twenty-nine, IV, and V, concerning the sign of signs, the size of signs, and the number of signs and location. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Jeffrey Petrello. Name and address for the record, please.
Jeffrey Petrello, three forty-one D South Broadway. Okay, what I'd like to discuss tonight was subsequent to the last meeting, when I mentioned that on September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the planning board voted against the landowner at lot number eighteen, his name is Angelo Memolo. And since then, he, he's been picking it up again as of January third by storing junk all over the lot, and so on and so forth. I recall saying that last, at the last city council meeting, hopefully, we can resolve all the illegal zoning violations at our next city council ordinance meeting, committee meeting, which in the next few days, we will petition city clerk Eileen Bernal. Within the petition, we will state our grievances and what particular zoning laws and Superior Court judgments have been violated. Apparently, Mr. Memolo has declared a zoning law against us and various city officials by his willful disobedience. Furthermore, we have, we have a proposal that will stop and prevent businessmen from employing illegal spot zoning and unlicensed junkie ads in the neighborhood next to residential R-two zone lots. Our proposal to amend some of the zoning laws that also have what we feel are antiquated fines, such as three hundred dollars a day, when the lot owner says, "That's nothing. I make three to five thousand dollars a day by using that lot." So, he's at no loss. To more, we want more to update the appropriate fines to the land and property zoning laws to include first offense fines, second offense fines, third offense fines, leading to thirty to sixty-day suspensions of shop license. Why? Stops the commercial businessman shop owner from squatting or illegal spot zoning, commercial usage of a residential two property adjoining neighborhood, neighbors in a residential zone neighborhood. Example, if a businessman is fined three hundred dollars a day, that means that seven days he's fined twenty-one hundred dollars for the week. But if he says, "I'm making three to five thousand dollars a day using the lot," I'm going to believe more so it's five thousand a week. So, if it's five thousand a week, you subtract the twenty-one hundred, he's at a gain. He has no motivation to get off the lot. That's what we intend on discussing with Mr.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Sandra Lopez. Yeah, you, you coming to speak on behalf of item that, the four days worship?
I am.
We are going to be discussing that item later on today.
Later on?
That item, if your comments are related to the item, you're going to have an opportunity later on today. But you have the two and a half minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Sandra Lopez from eighty-nine Ashland Avenue in Methuen. I am here regarding the four days of worship. I belong, I'm a member of the Pentecostal Church Healing the Broken Hearted. My pastor's here with me, and we would like to rely, why we would like to have this four days of worship.
Hi. Hi, my name is Marima Martinez. We're, like Imane Sandra said, we're pastors of Healing the Broken Hearted, three sixty Merrimack Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts. We just want to thank you, first of all, for allowing the three days of worship last year. It was beautiful. We had a good experience, the community, and first of all, again, thank you. But we also, you know, are requesting again, but this year, four days of worship. And we want to, you know, bring hope to the community of Lawrence, lift up their faith through the word of God. There's a lot of families in need, going through hard times, and that's what our vision is, you know, just bring them peace in these hard times through the word of God and the presence of the Holy Spirit. So, thank you again, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. All these things are going to be submitted for the record. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
We'll, we'll, we'll. All right, we have a couple of public pieces on our table today. We're going to have the first one, so we're going to, right away, continue to those. The first one, we have the public hearing, item five seventy-four twenty-four. All right, we have, we have a couple of city officials that are here today, and Mr. McCarthy is here for a couple of items, so we're going to be taking those first. And the first one is the, out of public hearing, item five seventy-four twenty-four, which is the amended zoning on Jackson Street from R-two to B-one. Madam Clerk, please read the public notice.
Document number five seven four dash twenty-four is, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five, notices hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June third, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P.M. in the council chambers, two hundred Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, and in accordance with a recently revised City Council Rule Two, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person and remotely, to accommodate participants with health considerations that prevent them from participating in person. To receive access codes for remote participation, please contact city clerk at eileen.bernal@cityoflawrence.com or nine seven eight six two zero three two three zero, or view the meeting on Facebook and YouTube. The purpose of the hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning document number five seventy-four twenty-four, a proposal to amend the zoning ordinances and zoning map as follows. To amend the zoning map for twenty-two parcels of land on Jackson Street from Irving Street to Kendrick Street, known as Assessor's Map one-ten, Lot ninety-five through one-ten dash ninety-eight, and one-oh-nine seventy-seven through one-oh-nine thirty-five, and further alternatively identified as one-forty to two-thirty-seven Jackson Street, from residential R-two to Local Business District B-one. Copies of the relevant plans for the above referenced partitions are on file with the office of the city clerk and may be viewed upon request. Persons wishing to be heard will be afforded the opportunity.
All right, public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's the vote?
Motion to approve?
There is a motion to approve, properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Counselor Plant.
I'm not sure if this is going to go. I just, as a courtesy to our colleague who put it on the agenda, we expect the council from District B to be here shortly. She may want to speak on this matter. I would like for us to table that. I don't want to have Mr. McCarthy say any longer than he has to, so if there's other Dan McCarthy matters, we can take that up. And if she's still, if she's still not here, then we can take this up for a vote. But as a courtesy to our colleague, just because she sponsored, I would, I would think we would want to table it. So, with that, I'll make a motion to table for a little bit later this evening.
There is a motion to table, Counselors.
Second.
Can I hear a second? Properly second, no discussion on the table matters. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. We proceed with the next item that we have for Mr. McCarthy, which is?
The National Grid ones, the one-thirty-four, one-thirty-five. He's here for those public hearings. I'm sorry, did I take that? It's not yours, but.
All right, the next, the next public hearing is item one-thirty-four twenty-five, the relocated one SO pole in Asbury Street. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
Could I please get a motion to waive the preamble?
Motion, waive the preamble?
There's a motion to waive the preamble, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any ayes? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, proceed.
Document number one-thirty-four twenty-five and one-thirty-five twenty-five, the public hearing reads, "The purpose of the hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition presented by Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, requesting the city of Lawrence, Mass. buy and through its city council members for permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, and/or underground conduits, including any necessary and sustaining and protective fixtures along and across the following public ways." Document number one-thirty-four dash twenty-five, to relocate one J-O, excuse me, relocate one SO pole on Amesbury Street, the reference number is three zero seven five two nine seven eight, submitted by David Johnson, National Grid. And document number one-thirty-five dash twenty-five is to relocate two J-O poles on Amesbury Street, reference number three zero seven five two nine seven eight, also submitted by David Johnson, National Grid. Copies of the relevant plans for the above referenced petitions are on file with the office of the city clerk and may be viewed upon request. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
All right, counsel, motion, public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve?
There is a motion to approve, item one-thirty-four twenty-five. Can you hear a second? Properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please read the notice for item one-thirty-five twenty-five. Oh, it was joined, yes. Now, we entertain a motion for item one-thirty-four twenty-five. Can I get a motion for item one-thirty-five twenty-five?
Motion to approve?
There is a motion to approve, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you. So, let's go now to item out of the housing committee. Madam Chair from the housing committee, let's present the report for item one-seventy-three twenty-five, which is the acceptance, acceptance of an easement from William R. Company to Glen Street Associate to the city of Lawrence for operation of the frame rails line to the Lawrence Industrial Park at thirty Glen Street. Madam, Madam, Madam Chair from the housing committee.
Item one-seventy-three twenty-five, acceptance of an easement from Whitmore Company and Glen Street Associates to the city of Lawrence for the operation of a freight rail line to the Lawrence Industrial Park at thirty Glen Street, was presented in the housing committee, and we had voted in a favorable recommendation to submit that to full council, and I submit that to you in the form of a motion.
Second. There is a motion to, there is a motion to approve, properly second discussion.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe I have to add anything. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
There's no question, any questions? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you, my sister clerk.
Thank you.
Let's go back to the, to the hearing.
I'd like to take document five seventy-four?
Five seventy-four.
Off the table, off the table matters.
There's a motion to, five seventy-four from, from table matters, properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, Mr. McCarthy, do you mind going for another? For item one-seventy, five seventy-four twenty-four? Just give us a quick explanation for the record.
Wait, excuse me?
Just give us a quick explanation.
Uh, which number?
Just give us a quick explanation for the record on item five seventy-four twenty-four, which is the amended zoning on Jackson Street from Residential Two to Business One.
Okay, certainly. So, this matter, as all zoning ordinance requirements, having changes have to go to the planning board first and then to the committees first. So, this matter was reviewed by the, the Lawrence Planning Board. There should be a decision, a favorable decision in support of amending the current zoning for twenty-two properties on Jackson Street. At the request of this council, I was asked to do a review of the properties that are affected by this prop, this proposed change. There are twenty-two properties that will be affected by this. The change will go from Irving Street at the Spigot River all the way up to Kendrick Street. There's twenty-five buildings on that site. My analysis showed that out of twenty-two properties, only two of them are currently conforming to the existing Residential Two. Most of, there's, there's several large multifamily houses there. There's also several businesses there. The city, the city adopted a recent zoning ordinance as well to, to allow office uses in these older homes, sort of a boutique. And one of the budding prop, the property owners down there, who opened up a real estate office, was also asking for this. He was able to get a special permit to change it, but by analyzing the entire district, it would seem that the B-one, which is the local business district, is actually a more appropriate designation than the Residential Two, which is our second-most stringent residential district. It does allow residential housing, but again, out of twenty-two properties, only two of the properties are conforming now. That means there's only two two-family houses on that entire street.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, a quick history on the, on this item. A notice of opposition from the, from the Lawrence Planning Board was sent out to the council, and the vote, four to zero, in support of the, of the current change, was presented. Now, we have a public hearing, the, the full council, and we are discussing and about to vote for the changes. Counselors, any other questions or any questions regarding to this matter?
I got a comment on the matter.
Counselor Plant.
So, just so I'm clear, so, and again, this has been a while since we last voted on or talked about at the ordinance committee, but this is a matter where, like you said, there, there are mixed-use properties there now, and there is housing units there that probably should not have been there, and now we just, because of the reality, being practical and pragmatic as we are, we saw what's there, and we just need to make it have some sense and be consistent with, with the actual usage. So, that's the nickel summary. Am I accurate with that summary? That's correct. Okay. So, my, I'm going to be voting in favor of this tonight. It has, it has little to do with this issue specifically, but more to do with what we're facing in the city as a whole. This is probably not the only place where we're seeing this in the city of Lawrence. We probably have several places, several locations, several areas where we're probably, where this is repeated. And the, the lesson that we should be, we should be taking and understanding is that years ago, when we had an ISD department whose job was to make sure that our codes and our zoning was enforced, didn't do it. I'm not saying the current folks today. I'm just talking administration upon administration upon administration. And I just think this is an important note, that when we sit here today, and when the folks sit upstairs in the various departments, the impacts of not acting appropriately ripple years from now, beyond when we're here, and maybe beyond when they're here. So, I just, I'm taking this time quickly just to say, these votes are important. And what's important is making sure our departments are doing what they're supposed to be doing. If they're not, we're faced with something like this, which probably shouldn't be happening like it is, which means we're going backwards on this. They've already did it, and now we're just okaying it, as opposed to them asking us to do something different, and then we're saying, yes, you can. It's completely opposite. I just want to take that moment, Council President, to, to reiterate that. Thank you.
Point well taken. Counselors, any other questions? I hear none. At this time, all the questions.
Motion to approve?
He was exactly those two people made it through. Counselor was already made it.
Thank you, thank you, Counselors. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now, we are going to be taking item out of the table matters, if, Counselors, we have a few other people here that are waiting. Out of the table matters, let's, if, if counsel preferred, we can take item one-ninety-nine twenty-nine, twenty-five, which is the appointment of Edwin Mata to the zoning board of appeal as an associate member. So, Counselors, I need a motion, I need a motion to remove this from the table matters. So, move. There's a motion to remove it out of the table matters, properly, can I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion, I mean, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now, Counselors, we, we have item one-ninety-nine twenty-five, the appointment of Edwin Mata to the zoning board of appeal. Edwin, you have the opportunity to talk to us.
Good evening, Council. My name is Erwin Mata, and I'm honored to be considered for an appointment to the zoning board of appeals. As a long, lifelong member of the Lawrence community, a real estate professional, and someone passionate about responsible development, I see this as an opportunity to contribute meaningfully to the city's growth. I believe my experience working with residents, property owners, and city officials gives me a unique lens to fairly interpret zoning decisions and uphold the city's long-term vision. Thank you for your consideration.
Counselors, a few things that we need to disclaim is that this position will begin on January, and this position will expire on December thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven. His compensation, or the compensation for this position will be for the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Total. Counselors, we have received all the pretending documents for this candidate, which is, include the application and usually the resume. I haven't got. Yes, and the resume. So, for your review and potentially vote. Any questions for the candidate? Counselor Plant.
So, I just listened to what you had to say. You said responsible development. Can you define what that means?
I support smart growth for the city, housing affordability, and also just the maintaining the, the city's character. So, that's what I mean by responsible development.
Can you give me, so before you, you're going to be getting asked questions for waivers, special permits? And, and oftentimes, you'll be asked to maybe put an additional, forget about the, the, the activities and that the activities limitation, the accessory dwelling units, the ADUs, forget about the ADUs for a moment, right? In places where that's not applicable, you're going to be asked for an extension, for a waiver, to a special permit, to, to create housing in a certain spot. In the city like Lawrence, from your experience with the stuff that we're facing in the city, give me an example of smart growth that you mentioned, and being responsible to the character of the city when someone is asking for something like that, because you're going to be getting an awful lot of those.
Sure. Sure. That's a great question. I'm committed to, uh, impartial decision-making, so I take a fairness, you know, I take a fair approach, and, uh, we'd look at it on a case-by-case basis. It's, it's what I'd say.
Your background's in real estate, in real estate development and sales.
Sure.
So, it, does that, would I, should I be led to believe that you would have a leaning toward increasing housing and increasing growth, um, and, and more units in the city because of your background? Would that be a fair or an unfair characterization?
Um, I think we have to preserve the unique character of the city, um, so I can't really generalize or, or give you a general answer for that. I guess we'll, we'll look at each case and, um, you know, and, and analyze each individual case and, and make a decision, a fair decision based on the individual situation of, of, you know, what we're looking at, so.
One of the things that's really important for a posi- this is a very important position that you're about to undertake if, if, if we're confirmed today. If you get this position, what I, what I, what I... Oftentimes, people do not understand that there's other impacts from other departments, so it's just not zoning, and you're in a silo. You have ISD. We just talked about something just a, a moment ago regarding ISD making, not doing, over the years, not this administration, not necessarily this ISD, but over the years, not doing their, necessarily their job in making sure that, that our, our zoning laws are adhered to. But we also need to consider other organizations when we're considering perhaps zoning increases. Our schools, for example. Parking, for example. Trash pickup and the costs associated with, big ticket item, trash pickup in the city. Those are just a few of the variables that when you make a decision, I'm going to allow this waiver to allow more units to be here, there's gonna be a ripple effect, most likely, on each one of those other departments beyond ISD. So I just wanna, I guess, if you wanna comment on that, I'm willing to listen, but that's the concern that I have, that, that I don't think when people initially go in to your position, they think through all those things. They just think, okay, I'm gonna listen to petitioner, yes or no. Meanwhile, there's other impacts. Do you wanna comment?
I believe zoning should support opportunity, um, while still protecting residents from overreach or any harm. So, again, it all goes back to taking each case on an individual basis, and, um, you know, I, I take a, a balanced and fair-minded approach to, to this role, so.
Thank you, Council President. I'll listen to my colleagues if they have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Councillors, sorry about that. Councillors, any questions? Councilor Plan.
Um, several things. You continue to say maintaining its character. Elaborate, what do you mean by that?
I've, I'm a lifelong member of Lawrence, so I've, I've lived here twenty-plus years, um, you know, so I can tell you a little bit about what it was before when I got here back in two thousand and five and what it's, what it is now. A lot of opportunities have, obviously, you know, we just talked about parking and, and several things of that nature, which, uh, the city has done a great job with, uh, the school system now. But, you know, I, I feel like everyone is, is contributing to this in their own individual way, so I just wanna make sure that I also, um, can contribute to my city, and I feel like I can do that with this, uh, with the ZBA role.
You also mentioned you're gonna handle things on a case-by-case basis, which I completely understand. Um, and oftentimes, you're gonna have to analyze, but I would like to kinda gauge into how would you go about into analyzing? Whenever you're gonna make certain decisions and you may need help or advice, where would be, um, your first step in doing so?
My first step would be my sphere of influence, so I, I, you know, I have, um, I'd say really good relationships with, uh, just local members of the community, um, and also small business owners and, uh, you know, local officials, so I, I feel like I can get some pretty good advice from, from those folks. I have, say, we're a pretty good team, so.
Yeah, I see your resume, and I see that you're working for a reputable, um, broker, very well-known. And I see that you're young, and, um, I, I, I often try not to, um, you know, the fact that sometimes people are not as seasoned or are just getting started in terms of taking on roles like the position that you're about to take on. Um, I don't like to, you know, hold too much pressure on someone that still is trying to figure things out. Um, and the reason why I had asked you, how would you go about in analyzing situations on a case-by-case basis, is because I urge you... Excuse me, guys. I urge you to build a relationship with each one of the councillors that you see before you, um, because I feel like that's where you're gonna get the most, um, the most contribution to, to information. Um, each one of the councillors here represents a district, and they're the ones who have the eyes and ears of the constituents, um, who hears the complaints, um, and have a, a good sense as to, you know, what would work and what will not. Um, and I'm pretty sure that each one of us, depending on what district, you know, the decisions that you're, you're gonna be making, um, will be able to provide you amazing insight. So, I just want you to walk away with that, that, um, you're not gonna miss out on building a relationship and making sure that you get to know each one of the councillors. That way, it would serve your role, uh, completely better.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councillors, any other questions?
Yes.
Councillor Santiago.
Uh, I don't know if it's for him or for, eh, administration. Eh, I'm looking for the resume, and I see he lives in Andover.
I live in Lawrence, uh, two fifty Mayor McFry in South Lawrence, um...
Okay.
Lived in Lawrence twenty years, huh?
It's okay, just make sure the address.
Any other councillors? Motion approved?
Second.
There is a motion to, there is a motion to... All right, this is in order, definitely. Uh, any other councillors who'd like to speak? All right, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you, Council.
All right, the next item, uh, we have is ordinance committee.
Yeah, can we get these people?
Yeah, of course. We're going to ordinance committee right now, so you can ask, uh, for, to take item two twenty-six twenty-five. All right, we're going to committee report, and we're going to ordinance committee. Mr. Chair from the ordinance committee, Councilor Plan. Item two-two-six twenty-five.
The ordinance committee met on two twenty-six twenty-five. Call forward. Two twenty-six twenty-five, call four days of worship at O'Connell Park, uh, from August seventh through tenth of this year. We'll send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation, and then make that in the form of a motion.
There is a motion, uh, there's a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much. You've been approved.
Amen.
All right, uh, going top of the agenda, the ordinance committee reports.
They need to go home.
I know, right?
Continue on, Council President. Document ninety-nine twenty-five, the ordinance committee met on this as a no-parking zone on Blanchard Street. West side from Farnham Street to the property line was set up at full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and that's the motion.
Second. The motion is to order a public hearing, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item, uh, one twelve twenty-five.
This is handicap parking at forty-four Tremont Street. This was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
Second. The motion is to order a public hearing, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two, uh, one thirteen twenty-five.
Another handicap parking at twenty-two Lindis Street was sent up to the full council to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
Motion is to order a public hearing, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one nineteen twenty-five. Resident parking.
Oh, gotcha. Just wanna see if there's any notes on it. All right. This is resident parking at Jackson Court. This was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
Second. The motion to order a public hearing, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one twenty-three twenty-five.
This is, uh, childcare parking at three thirty-six Walnus Street. This was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and that's the motion.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, too, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, although, they went through, yeah. Uh, item one thirty-three twenty-five.
Yeah, we, I'll move with one twenty-four.
Oh, sorry, sorry, one twenty-four twenty-five.
Handicap parking at three forty-three South Broadway, sixty feet from Kenneth Street to on the west side, was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
The motion is to order a public hearing, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item, uh, one thirty-three twenty-five.
Stop sign on Crescent Street on the corner of May Street was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
Motion is to order a public hearing, uh, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one thirty-six twenty-five.
Handicap parking at forty-nine Bradford Street was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
Motion is to order a public hearing, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one thirty-six twenty-five.
I'm gonna do one ninety-four, which is to remove handicap parking at twenty-three North Boylston Street. That was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
The motion is to order a public hearing. Properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes, the ayes have it. Item, uh, two nineteen twenty-five.
This is to remove handicap parking on nineteen Exchange Street. This was sent up to the full council with a rec- favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
All right, the motion is to order a public hearing, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two twenty-one twenty-five.
This is childcare parking at one twenty-nine Trenton Street was sent up to the full council to withdraw, and then make that in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion to withdraw, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two twenty-four twenty-five.
Can you go back? I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. Council President?
Yes.
Do you just voted, uh...
Item two twenty-one twenty-five.
Two twenty-one twenty-five.
Yes, to withdraw. They already have one.
It's already in the agenda. Okay, thank you. All right.
Item two twenty-four twenty-five.
This is a request, uh, access to ac- eh, sorry, repeat. This is a request to access the sidewalk for produce display at two seventy-four South Broadway near the Gomez Meat Market. This was sent up to the full council, um, in favor of recommendation, and to make that in a form of a motion.
There is a motion that, there is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. Council Levick.
This is a question. Does this know the... Eileen, this is not the item that we talked about before regarding the display? There's another. This is a new one?
This is a second one, yes, Council. This is a second one.
All right. Any other questions?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Council Levick.
We say, we sent some information to these people, no, or...
Council, I apologize. Off the top of my head, I, I do think it's a different applicant than this one.
Two different applicants?
Yeah, I think it's two very similar, but different, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Uh, Councilor, this is the one on South Lawrence, right?
Yeah, they are both in South Lawrence.
And this is for, for Gomez, which is in two seventy-four South Broadway.
Can I make a comment on this one, when?
Of course.
When you're done.
I remember that, uh, the owner came up, came up here once regarding parking. This is same, same supermarket.
My comment was gonna be, at, at the ordinance committee level...
Council, Council, Council.
Yes, it's okay.
I was just gonna suggest that my, my good friend in Colley from District C made an excellent point, uh, at the ordinance committee that I wanted to repeat tonight, which is, they're doing things the right way. Oftentimes, uh, individuals, groups, property owners just do whatever they want, and they, and there're supposed to be laws that appear, and, and they did the things the right way. So, when, it's really bad when you have to applaud people for doing things the right way. You should just expect them doing it the right way, but in this particular case, good for them, they did it the right way, and I'm happy to vote in favor of it tonight.
Thank you. Essentially, yes, they, they have to come in front of the council to be able to displace anything on the sidewalk permanently. But yes, Council Levick, any other questions?
I'm sorry, I'm so frustrated. I saw that was the same item that we submitted before, and they were expecting to be approved of, of the side, while just put also the approval of some of the best of... Yes, there are about two or three of them that are requested.
Yep. All right, if it is any other items pending on this, and then we will take care of it, because everybody's in the agreement that they should have the displacement. Uh, any other question? All right, I'll call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item two twenty-nine twenty, uh, twenty-five, relocate.
This is to relocate two J O holes on Stern Tavas, and the full council with a recommendation to order a public hearing, that's the motion.
Second.
All right, there is a motion, uh, there's a motion to, there's a motion to order a public hearing, properly second, discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, Councillors, we're going to the top of the agenda. Matters, public pending hearings, we have that. Communication from the mayor, city officials, city attorney, there is none. Committee report, the budget and finance committee, there is no report. Housing committee, we already done. Ordinance, we done. Personal committee, there is no report. Public safety committee, there is no report. Economic development, there is no report. Committee of the hall, there is no report. In all business, there is nothing, and on all business. Uh, any table matters, Councillors?
Council President?
Councilor Santiago.
I don't item that Mr. La Plan put it on table, the Councilor.
No, it, we already brought it.
Okay.
Uh, any other table matters? All right, we're going straight to new business. Item, uh, two thirty-three twenty-five, there will be on approval of annual applications for HAB for the Community Development Block Grant, CDPGs, and for the amount of one million six hundred and thirty-eight, seven, uh, seven thirteen, and home grant in the amount of eight hundred thousand thirty-five, eight ninety-seven point seventeen. That's going to the, uh, to the budget and finance committee. Item two thirty-four twenty, uh, twenty-five, transfer of four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy point thirty-four from the free cash account to the new account designated for police, uh, police department capital improvement. That is going to the budget and finance committee. Item two thirty-five twenty-five, year-end transfer between departments account, Ramona, Ramona Caballo, send that, those up to the full council, to the council, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item two thirty-six twenty-five, authorization, uh, reauthorization of, uh, Wollamont Cemetery revolving fund account, that's going for the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars, that's going to the budget and finance committee. that's going for the amount of $95,000, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item 237-25, reauthorization of Council of Agent revolving fund account, expenditure limit for the amount of $150,000, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item 238-25, the reauthorization of Recreation and Parks Self-Supplementing Services revolving funds account, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item 239-25, reauthorization of the Better Memorial Stadium revolving funds account for the expenditure of $100,000, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item 240-25, reauthorization of Library Program revolving funds account for the expenditure limit of $50,000, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item 241-25, reauthorization of OPEC assets and cable, the PEC assets and cable-related funds, revolving funds accounts appropriate for the total amount of $450,000, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item 242-25, the reauthorization of DPW recycling revolving funds account, expenditure limit of $150,000, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item 273-25, transfer fund for the amount of $6,137,126 from free cash to various accounts, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item 244-25, approval of adopt, city new housing production plan, that's going, that's going to the housing committee. Item 245-25, adopt, adopt new farm flooding map for the city and approve amendment for the city flooding management ordinance, chapter 1532, with later regulation from the National Flood Insurance Program, that should go to the ordinance committee. Item 276-25, consideration of land lease beyond 20 years.
That's gone to ordinance sometimes and it's gone to housing, depending what you want to do.
All right, let's send it to housing. Item 274-25, stop sign on Bennett Street, at Bedford Street, and that's going to ordinance Bennett into Bedford, yeah. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item 248-25, a stop sign street at Water Street, no, stop sign on Bennett into Water, into Water Street, that's going to the ordinance committee.
Do you want that same thing on Bedford?
Item 249-25, handicap parking 11 Short Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Item 250-25, handicap parking 676 Low Street, that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 251-25, handicap parking 177 Garden Street, that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 252-25, handicap parking at 7 Parker Street, Park Art Street, that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 253-25, handicap parking on 161 Saratoga Street, that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 254-25, handicap parking at 29 Woodman Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Item 255-25, reigniting the valid at Campanion Common, August 15 and August 16, 25, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 256-25, 41st Arnold Bread and Roses Festival at the Campanion Common, September 1st, 25, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 257-25, family gathering at the O'Connell Park, South Common, July 19, 25, from 9:00 a.m. to, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 258-25, Dia de Glamor Adios, Dia de Glamor Adios at the Campanion Common, August 13, 25, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 259-25, Mind With Purpose Basketball Tournament at the O'Connell Park, South Common, on August 24, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., that's going to the ordinance committee. Item 260-25, disclosure of a conflict of, conflict by the city employee, that's going to ordinance committee. Item 261-25, Lawrence Cycling Club Event La Vuelta at the Campanion Common, July 13, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., that's going to the ordinance committee. Councillors, let's go with the committee dates. Ordinance committee.
Next Tuesday, June 10, 7:00 p.m. Oh, can I ask you a question? What's our budget? What's our budget?
June 16 and 18.
Thank you.
Ordinance is Tuesday, June 10. Housing?
Housing, I'll do Thursday, June 12 at 6:00 p.m.
Budget and finance?
I'll do Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, June 11 at 6:00 p.m.
Any other committee?
There's something at Public Safety, I don't know if you want to take it off the table.
Yeah, any at Public Safety?
Council Luzon, you had that item, you had an item at Public Safety.
I'm the vice chair.
No, no. You.
No, who is it?
No, I'm just trying to say, Council Luzon has an item at Public Safety, and I didn't know if it was time-sensitive or not. It was the request for?
No, it's not time-sensitive. We can do it after budgets.
Next time, okay.
All right. Any other committees? If you, if you guys decide to do a meeting, then you can get in touch with Teresa. Councillors, at this point, if you have any other items, motion to adjourn. They can hear us second.
Second.
Properly second. Discussion, I hear none. Oh, before we go, councillors, let's go back. Can we, can we, can we remove that motion to amend in the minutes, please? Okay, there is, we draw the motion. Councillors, on the minutes, there was a minor, minor mistake that we need to adjust. One of the votes, it was a unanimous vote, but it was a typo and we have absent. So can I get a motion to amend those minutes on the motion related? Motion to amend, properly second, discussion. Just explain, that's on the motion related to the chief of police. It was a unanimous vote, we would like to amend those, to reflect that vote. Any other questions? Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now, I want to turn a motion to. Motion to adjourn, properly second. All those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors.
Can I talk to me? Yeah. Counselor, I apologize, I was.